Could I have everybody sit down, please? We're about ready to get started. So if you could take your seats, we'd appreciate it. There's lots of seats over here on this side. Could we have a round of applause for the Abington High School String Ensemble? And the Abington High School Select Choir? As I said, we're going to get started in just a second, but I just wanted to thank the officials here at the Community College. We came to them about a month ago and asked if we could have this event here, and they have been spectacular in trying to put this together, and this has been no small feat. So I just wanted to take a moment and thank everyone from the Community College, starting with the President Karen Stout. And her top assistant Peggy Lee Clark. And I would just like to recognize the rest of these wonderful, hard-working folks. If you just hold your applause, and we'll do that at the end. George Shaw, who's the Director of College Services. Charles Scandone, Director of Facilities Management. Steve Choice, Custodial Supervisor, and his staff. They were here early this morning cleaning up, and we had a little problem with one of the bomb-sniffing dogs had an accident, so they got that cleaned up. And so they've done a great job. Joe McGarrigan, who is the Director of Safety. Joe Mancini, Executive Director of Technical Services. And the IT staff here has been tremendous. They're videotaping this, they are streaming it to the county website, they are streaming it to the Shapiro-Richards website, and the Patch people, the Patch reporters are streaming it as well on their websites. So it's a great undertaking, and we thank them. Greg Heimer, the Manager of the Media Services. Frank Lieb, Multimedia Specialist. Matt Porter, Senior Producer. The IT staff, as I said. Andrew Kachesa, who's the Director of the Montgomery County Choir, who will do the National Anthem later in the program. He's been a tremendous help. And Andrew Rosner, the Head of IT. One other note, if there's any young children here who may not be as enamored with the exercise in democracy that we're going to have today, and if you'd like, there is an overflow room across the hall that has a screen in there, in case you wanted to take advantage of that. So without any further ado, we'll get started. Thank you very much. All rise, please. Oh, yea, oh, yea, oh, yea. All matter of person, have your business come before the Honorable Judges of the Court of Common, please. In and forth, the Counting Montgomery here holding this day, let them come forth, and fear they shall be heard. God save the Commonwealth and this Honorable Court. The Honorable Richard J. Hodgson, President of Judge Presiding, please be seated.
Welcome, everyone, to the quadrennial swearing-in ceremony for the Montgomery County Commissioners and Row Officers. Thank you for being here. I'm Dr. Karen Stout, President of Montgomery County Community College. I'm on my home court, so to speak. Please join me in recognizing the Abington High School String Ensemble and the Abington High School Select Choir for providing this morning's musical prelude. It is now my pleasure to introduce John Piesiak, the Court Crier for President Judge Richard J. Hodgson, who will open court this morning. Mr. Piesiak.
Yes, open court.
We open court. Great. Good morning, and on behalf of the Board of Trustees of the College, many of whom are here today, the more than 25,000 credit students at both of our campuses, and the faculty and staff at Montgomery County Community College, I welcome you once again to our central campus and our vital and vibrant college. We are proud to be ranked among the nation's most digital-savvy community colleges, to be the home to three Carnegie Foundation Pennsylvania College and University Teachers of the Years, the most ever by one community college, and to most recently gain honors as a leader college, one of only 23 community colleges in the country, for our work in improving students' success rates. While this national recognition is important because it affirms our academic quality, our success is best measured by our students and the successes of our students and alumni in this community. Our students and our alumni live and work in this county and this region. They are our community's nurses, public safety professionals, educators, dental hygienists, biotechnicians, nonprofit leaders, clergy, journalists, lawyers, local and state legislators, and even a few of today's elected officials. Because 95% of our students live and work in this region, I like to say that we're part of this county's brain game, not brain drain. Our strengths as a college lie in our local roots and in this county's strong and visionary commitment to local sponsorship of its community college. A commitment formed when the college was founded in 1964, and a commitment that continues today between the college and the county commissioners. As a result, I'd be remiss if I did not thank our outgoing county commissioners for continuing that legacy of strong local support, especially in the recent weeks as they face very difficult decisions about preserving local support for critical county services. Thank you on behalf of our 25,000 students. Given our local roots and our commitment to open admissions and open access, which often leaves community colleges described as democracies colleges, we are honored that our college has been selected to host this important event. Thank you for joining us for what promises to be a very special day for many people. There are many honored guests with us today. I'm not going to name each one individually, but rather as collective groups. Our Judges of the Court of Common, please. Members of Congress, our state and local representatives and senators. Commissioner Bruce Castor. Commissioners-elect Josh Shapiro and Leslie Richards. Row officers and Row Officers-elect. Members of the clergy, and other distinguished guests. Also, welcome to our retiring Chairman of the County Commissioners, Joe Hopple, who is also with us today. And I believe another former county commissioner, Ruth Dampsker, who's also in the audience. 2012 is a presidential election year, and much attention will be given to the unfolding campaign over the next 10 months. Today, in fact, is also Caucus Day in Iowa. As Americans, we are proud of our democratic form of government and our peaceful and seamless transitions of power. When we think of our democracy, many around the world and here at home think first of our presidential elections. Yet every year, state, county, and municipal elections are other wonderful and important and impactful examples of democracy at work. Today, we swear in the men and women who were elected by the people of Montgomery County in the last election to provide leadership for our county over the next four years. For Montgomery County, the election of 2011 was historic. For the first time in over 140 years, the yoke of leadership is being officially transferred to a different political party. 140 years is a long time, and in that respect, today is a momentous day. Today, however, is not about political parties or ideology or campaigns. Today is a day to celebrate our democracy and our commitment to those ideals that make this country great. Today is about these men and women preparing to govern and lead our county, and today offers all of us a chance to thank and recognize them for committing a portion of their lives and careers to public service. Please join me in showing our appreciation to our Montgomery County leaders. Ladies and gentlemen, would you please stand? Thank you. And now, I have the privilege of introducing Reverend Charles W. Quan, who will deliver the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the posting of the colors, the Pledge of Allegiance, and the National Anthem. Reverend Quan.
What does the Lord require? To do justly, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with our God. O thou great and eternal God, the one from whom all of life blessings flow, we pause on this day to give you thanks for allowing us to see the dawning of a new and exciting blessing in Montgomery County. We lift up today our row officers, and we especially lift up our three Commissioners: Bruce Castor, Josh Shapiro, Leslie Richards. We pray, O God, that they will work together for the welfare of our community. We thank you for all of their dedication and hard work in the campaign. We thank you for the volunteers and staff. But today, we ask that you would bless those who will pick up the mantle to govern. Give them wisdom, give them courage, give them compassion, give them, O God, peace of mind. There are so many challenges facing us, and yet we know that they cannot do it by themselves. So we pray that each of us and all of us will help them. We ask, O God, that we might have the wonderful opportunity to see new blessings unfold. May this day warm their hearts, bless their families, and bless, O God, the people that they will serve. We thank you especially for our two new Commissioners, Leslie and Josh. We pray that the three Commissioners will work together across party lines. We pray, O God, that as a people in this community, whether we are black or white, Asian or Hispanic, whether we are Democrat or Republican, whether we learn or unlearn, that we'll work together so that this community will be a place by which all of us can experience the mighty blessings. We ask, O God, that this day might long be remembered in the lives of those who will take this noble office, and we pray that as we see their government unfold, we will know that they have been blessed by thee and that we are recipients of their blessings. Give them shalom, and may all of our lives be a total indication that we're working together for one cause, to make not only Montgomery County a strong community, but Pennsylvania, America. And for all this, we ask, in your name, and all of the God's people say together, amen.
The Montgomery County Sheriff's Department Color Guard will now post the colors. Our pledge of allegiance today will be led by some of the children of our county commissioners.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice.
It is now with great pride that I introduce to you members of the Montgomery County Community College Choir, under the direction of Associate Professor Andrew Kacheska, who will sing our National Anthem. It's now my honor to turn the program over to President Judge Richard J. Hodgson, who will conduct the swearing-in of our elected officials.
On behalf of our bench, I'd also like to welcome everyone to the festivities here today. We, as a court, are honored to be here this morning. With today's swearing-in ceremony, Montgomery County Government embarks on a fresh four-year quest to serve its citizens with efficiency and an unpowered level of quality of service. The men and women who comprise this governmental unit come equipped with a new sense of enthusiasm and a wealth of ideas designed to accomplish their goals of fostering Montgomery County's reputation as a wonderful place to live and to work. Please know that you have the full support of the court and that we will work arm-in-arm with you to provide the services necessary to make our court system the model for others to follow. All right, let us proceed with the ceremony. Clerk of Courts Anne Thornburg Weiss will be sworn in by the Honorable Lois E. Murphy. Lois?
Lois. I, Anne Thornburg Weiss.
I, Anne Thornburg Weiss.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, the Controller Stuart J. Greenleaf Jr. He'll be sworn in by the Honorable Thomas M. Del Richie.
While the family is gathering, I'd just like to say it is a great honor for me to swear in Stuart Greenleaf Jr. Something's wrong here. I, Stuart J. Greenleaf Jr.
I, Stuart J. Greenleaf Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next is the Coroner Walter I. Hoffman, M.D. Honorable Lois Murphy. Two for you.
Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Walter I. Hoffman, M.D.
I, Walter I. Hoffman, M.D.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Next is District Attorney Risa Vetri-Furman. She'll be sworn in by the Honorable Wendy Dempsey-Kalori.
As the family's gathering, I want to take this opportunity to say how proud and excited and privileged I am to be able to swear District Attorney Furman in. All right, ready?
I've never been ready.
Repeat after me. I, Risa Vetri-Furman.
I, Risa Vetri-Furman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Next up is the Prithonitary, Mark Levy. He'll be sworn in by the Honorable Garrett Page.
As Mark comes up with his beautiful family, Mark reminded me as he comes with his Bible that he'll be taking oath with, that one of his favorite scriptures is from Psalm 91, which in part says that "I will protect those who acknowledge me," and that "I will support those who call out my name and will answer that." Mark, just have someone hold the Bible and repeat after me. I, Mark Levy.
I, Mark Levy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, the Recorder D. Nancy Becker, she'll be sworn in by the Honorable Kelly C. Wall.
I too want to say how proud and excited I am to swear in Nancy Becker, who is my good friend and has done a wonderful job for this county. Thank you. I, Nancy Becker.
I, Nancy A. Becker.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
All right, next is the Register of Wills, D. Bruce Haynes, he'll be sworn in by a member of our Magisterial District Judges, the Honorable Elizabeth McHugh.
As it seems we're all doing, we all make a comment, but I have known the Haynes family for many years, and let me tell you, these are one of the most special families I've ever met. Mr. Haynes is a man of integrity and dignity, and I am honored to be here today to swear him in. Raise your right hand. I, D. Bruce Haynes.
I, D. Bruce Haynes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support, obey, and defend.
To support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
As Register of Wills.
As Register of Wills.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
All right, next is Arlene Whalen Bear, our new Sheriff, and I'm honored to say that I will be swearing her in.
Want to tell us who you have here today?
Yes, Your Honor. My husband Jim, my daughter Mary Mark, my daughter Jessica, and my son Jim. Thank you.
Go, Sal.
Go, Sal.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations, Sheriff.
Next is the Treasurer, Jason E. Salas, he'll be sworn in by Lois Murphy. She's got a hat trick here today.
I, Jason Salas.
I, Jason E. Salas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Our return now to our newly-elected Board of Commissioners. First up is Joshua D. Shapiro, he'll be sworn in by the Honorable William J. Ferber Jr.
Ladies and gentlemen, as my brothers and sisters who have preceded me, I too would like to say how honored I am to take part in this swearing-in ceremony for Josh Shapiro, and I wish him all the success as he goes forward with this new endeavor. Are you prepared to take the oath?
I think so. Are we ready, guys?
Yes. Looks like you are. Please repeat after me. I, Joshua D. Shapiro.
I, Joshua D. Shapiro.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
All right, next up is Leslie S. Richards, she'll be sworn in by the Honorable Carolyn T. Carluccio.
Leslie, you were my tennis partner, you are my friend, and as soon as I get this oath over with, you will be my county commissioner. We need everybody. Take your time, absolutely. I'll just take this time to introduce my daughter Rebecca, my husband Ira, my daughter Sophie, my son Ben, and my mother Eileen. Repeat after me. I, Leslie S. Richards.
I, Leslie S. Richards.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Next, Bruce L. Castor Jr., he'll be sworn in by the Honorable Patricia E. Coonehan.
It's my pleasure to swear in the Honorable Bruce L. Castor Jr. as Commissioner. He's a former boss of mine for about eight years, and I worked in the District Attorney's Office with him, so I'm very happy to do so. All right, repeat after me. I.
I.
Her name.
Bruce L. Castor Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
That I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge Hudson. Ladies and gentlemen, may I ask for a round of applause for our new county leadership? Now we will hear some comments from each of our county commissioners. Commissioner Bruce Castor will lead off and will be followed by Commissioner Leslie Richards and Commissioner Josh Shapiro. Commissioner Castor.
Leslie already put the pressure on me, she said I was setting the tone for the rest of the day, so I'm already nervous. I want to thank you all for coming, this is a wonderful showing, and Josh, Leslie, and I appreciate all the hard work that went into putting together this program. It certainly has come off well, at least so far. I want to thank my wife Elizabeth for coming and for holding the Bible yet again for me and putting up with five elections during our married life. My daughter Elizabeth, or my daughter Alexandra's here, my in-laws, and my family who have put up with the lifestyle that I have chosen reminds me of that line from The Godfather, "This is the life you have chosen." Well, certainly makes a lot of sense in this case. I want to thank the people who ran with me on the ticket, those that are on the stage here today, and those that did not make it to the stage. They were a terrific group of people, and I got to know them very well, especially my running mate Jenny Brown, who I think is an outstanding leader, and the county is happy to have her continue in her position down in Lower Marion. I want to thank the committee that supported us in the election, and all of the supporters and contributors that made the campaign possible, thank you. You know, it was funny during the campaign that we went through how many things we agreed upon, matter of fact, almost everything we agreed upon, and it's going to set the tone for what I hope to be four years of very honest and capable government. I was listening very closely to Reverend Kwan, and I was disappointed that he didn't say that he thought that we should work together. I don't know if any of you heard that, but I didn't hear that the four or five times that he said it. And now, you know, it's interesting in American government, American politics, you go from a campaign of partisan rhetoric and partisan positions to having to come together and decide issues that are for the health and welfare and well-being of the people that you represent. Fortunately, we've had several months to begin that process, and I have to say that it has been not just productive, but very respectful and very cordial, and I'm very much looking forward to working with Commissioner Richards and Commissioner Shapiro. You know, all of us who are in public life are very concerned all the time of how the public is perceiving us, and therefore you read the newspaper and you read the comments about us, and you can sometimes glean things from news reports about what others are thinking. And if you've noticed, since the election, there hasn't been absolutely zero statements in public undermining each other, and there've been zero in private undermining each other. That certainly bodes well, I think, for the coming four years. Now, more than anyone else up here, I have to say that I'm looking forward to the coming administration, because I've been waiting five years to stand in this spot, where all the other ones have only been waiting for a year. And I think good things are going to happen. It's an exciting time, and great challenges bring great opportunities for rewards. You don't have a chance to hit a home run unless you're standing at the plate, and we're certainly standing at the plate. You know, I was thinking while we were sitting here, the pomp and ceremony that we go through with the flags and the Pledge of Allegiance and the National Anthem, having the court turn out, all the members of the court turn out to show support for the county government, the executive, the legislature, and the judiciary all here together. And I was thinking why we do that. Now, many of you know that for many, many years, I tried cases in court representing the people of Montgomery County, and I enjoyed doing that, being part of a team to do justice. But what many of you don't know, and maybe only District Attorney Furman knows this of the people in this room, perhaps Elizabeth does, before I would close in a big case, in a case that I knew was getting a lot of attention, I would always get to work very early, and I would go down to the courtroom when there was no one there, believe it or not, the courtrooms were unlocked, and I would go down there and I would look around the courtroom, and I would think to myself all the things that we did in this room, the enormous responsibility that was placed on those of us that worked in those rooms. The judges, I'm sure, feel that every day, but it's enormous responsibility that went with representing the people. And we go through this pomp and this ceremony, and we almost are afraid that it becomes pro forma, but it's not pro forma. It's designed to remind all of us of the great importance, the great charge that we are granted by the people that entrusted us with these offices. And you heard the oath over and over again, and how did the oath end? Every single one ended with the words, "Discharge the duties of my office with fidelity." Those people that shared the stage with me four years ago and are sharing the stage with me here when they took oaths four years ago and again today, they discharged the duties of their office with fidelity, because they recognized the enormous responsibility placed on us. See, when you're in public service, the temptation is always there to place yourself and your own aggrandizement above that of the people who put you there. But the men and women who are on the stage here today recognize the importance of placing the welfare of the people we represent first. I used to say when I was in the District Attorney's Office that doing your job well was the best politics, and that is true. And my guess is that all of you believe that as well. Congratulations to all of my fellow elected officials who took the oath today, and I am very much looking forward to working with you to make Montgomery County a better place. Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning. Commissioner Shapiro, I like the sound of that. Commissioner Castor, judges, row officers, and friends. Thank you all for being here today. I am honored to share this stage with our esteemed judges and row officers and most importantly, my two colleagues on the Board of Commissioners. I am standing here today as a newly sworn in county commissioner, but it took a great deal of work and dedication from many people to get me to this moment. Thank you to everyone who gave their time, their talent, and their enthusiasm to allow me to have this honor of serving Montgomery County. Thanks to all who are gathered here and to those who worked so hard to make this swearing-in ceremony such an exceptional occasion. Most of all, I want to thank my family. My parents always encouraged me to follow my passion even when they didn't quite understand it. Thanks Mom. I never thought anyone would surpass my parents' support for me until I met my husband Ira. You were truly my biggest fan and while you never miss an opportunity to make fun of me with the kids, you also never stopped believing in my abilities and without you, I would definitely not be standing here today. Thank you. A little less than two months ago, I shared a bit of a late night with many of you as we gathered together to get the election results. My husband and I let our kids, Ben, Sophie, and Rebecca, stay up very late that night and the next morning, we all had a little trouble getting up. We let them sleep in a little bit late and I drove my daughter Rebecca to her school. We went into her office to sign her in and when she was asked, "What was your reason for being late?", she said with a smile and without a second of hesitation, "We were busy making history last night." Starting today, the history that truly matters is how my colleagues on the Board of Commissioners and I work together to serve everyone who lives in Montgomery County. There is a lot of work to do and we have a lot of issues to tackle, but as one of my favorite Republicans, Abraham Lincoln said, "The best part about the future is that it comes one day at a time." So where do we stand today on day one? On day one, I have the privilege of being able to work with two dedicated public servants. Commissioner Castor, I appreciate your commitment to public safety and public service. I've enjoyed sharing ideas with you over the past several weeks and I look forward to many productive conversations I know we will have in the future. Commissioner Shapiro, during our campaign, I often stated, "I cannot wait to govern with you." Your leadership in reforming state government, building bipartisan consensus, and advocating for quality education will serve Montgomery County well and I cannot fully express how excited I am that the time for us to govern is now and that we will be serving this county together. On day one, we have already taken steps to change the tone of county government. While we might not always agree on everything, we will work to make sure that different views will be considered and discussed respectfully. Our goal should not be just to talk to each other, but also to listen to each other, to produce the best results for Montgomery County. My door will always be open, not only to my colleagues, but also to everybody who wants to share their ideas. I am hoping to meet as many of the more than 3,000 county employees as possible over the next few weeks. If there is something we should see or somewhere we should be, please let us know. We have talented staff and we want to make sure that we fully take advantage of their knowledge and experience. On day one, we are working to make sure that Montgomery County is on solid financial footing. Our budget process starts today, not 10 or 11 months from now, not even next week. Every departmental goal, every item in the capital budget, every contract, every purchase will be reviewed. Also, we must do everything we can to create local jobs, spur economic development, and advocate for our local businesses. We must find innovative solutions such as public-private partnerships to provide funding for important projects and collaborate with Montgomery County Community College to provide excellent job training resources. On day one, as a regional planner, I am focused on how we can improve our communities, not just for ourselves, but for our children and for our grandchildren. When I travel around the county, I see why Montgomery County is known for its rich quality of life. Our county has beautiful parks, scenic trails, lush farmland, healthy business centers, and vibrant main streets. But we also have areas that have not done so well. There are struggling downtowns and vacant commercial properties. I am optimistic that over the next four years, we will plan intelligently, implement cooperatively, and work productively together to positively shape our county for future generations. So where are we on day one? We are together with much work to do and with much that we can accomplish. The impact of what we can accomplish is nothing short of astounding. So here's to day one. I am humbled, I am honored, and I am ready to serve. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Richards and Commissioner Castor, Commissioner Huffel, President Judge Hodgson, and the very distinguished members of our county bench, our row officers, Congresswoman Schwartz, my former colleagues in the General Assembly, President Stout, our county staff, family and friends. Thank you for being with us on this meaningful day. While a new job begins for me today, the places and the people that I will represent are so familiar. After all, this is the county where I was raised and where Lori and I now raise our four children. The parks where I played as a kid and the synagogue that I went to worship is now home for my family. This is the place where I met a ninth grade girl who would later marry me and it's the area that I was honored to represent in the State House for the past seven years. Montgomery County defined who I am and now I am honored to have this unique opportunity to help shape what it can be. I offer my profound thanks to the people of Montgomery County for giving me this chance to make a difference. But the most important thanks goes to my wife Lori for always believing in me and making the significant sacrifices necessary to let me live this life of public service. Thanks also goes to my parents and my in-laws for believing in me and giving our family the support necessary to make this a reality. You know, friends, I feel optimistic today and proud, proud of the county where we live and all that it represents. You know, the founding of our nation has roots right here in Montgomery County. After all, the revolution was fought here and those battles from Valley Forge to Barren Hill led to a freedom of a people and laid the foundation for the American dream. Our country is the birthplace of Hart Ramf, a Civil War general turned governor, of Lucretia Mott, an abolitionist from Cheltenham who courageously labored to end slavery and promote women's rights. Trapp made Muhlenberg the first Speaker of the United States House of Representatives and when David Rittenhouse built one of America's first telescopes, he connected East Norden to faraway planets. Our rich history should be a source of communal strength and pride, but we need not look only back as the possibilities for an even brighter future are endless with the strengths that this county boasts today. This is home to leading educational institutions like Montgomery County Community College, a leader in its class, of Fortune 100 companies, of top-rate hospitals, farming and agriculture centers, national historic landmarks, open spaces in quaint boroughs, and small businesses that drive our local economy. Our geography makes us vital to a region that generates over 40% of the Commonwealth's economy and uniquely positions us to be a significant player in technology, arts and culture, infrastructure, and the life sciences. We are a big county and we should be a big regional player. Yet our county and our residents face serious challenges today. Many citizens are struggling, particularly in the wake of the National Recession. On a Main Street walk through Pottstown this fall, Leslie and I met a man in front of his store who earned just $45 the week before. Another time in their living room, we listened to parents struggling to provide critical human services for their children with intellectual disabilities. We visited aging boroughs that need an infusion of interests from their county leaders to help reverse troubling trends. These problems are real, but so is our commitment to meet them head-on. Our core mission is twofold. First, we will look out for our residents and communities each and every day. We'll work to create jobs and grow our local economy, to care for our most vulnerable, and ensure that every corner of Montgomery County shares in the wealth of opportunity and promise. Second, we will reform our county government and make it work again. For too long, critical functions in certain communities and constituencies have been ignored. Personal agendas have guided decision-making and the fundamentals that made us so strong for so long were undermined. Let me be clear, today, starting right now, rancor and acrimony will yield to respect and accord. We will make the necessary changes to restore faith with our 800,000 county residents and meet the full potential of this great county. Our Board of Commissioners will be a model for civic engagement and achievement. This is our charge and I take this responsibility seriously and with great optimism, I assume this new role. William Penn, the founder of our Commonwealth, said, "Governments like clocks go from the motion that people give them." That motion, and my optimism, stems in part from my new colleagues on the board. Leslie is a model public servant, involved, intelligent, and inspiring. It was an honor to join on this journey with you together. Our partnership will have a lasting impact on me. And Bruce, Bruce brings a base of knowledge and a serious commitment to public service that is both admirable and instructive. In fact, today, we congratulate Commissioner Castor on becoming the longest-serving elected official here in this county. Our administration will help usher in a new era in Montgomery County and we are prepared to meet the challenges before us. In the words of President Kennedy, "We are not rivals for power, but we are partners for progress." We will not accomplish the necessary and difficult tasks overnight. Change is never easy, but we will not be afraid to do what is right and what is needed to make our county government work again. You know, choices are tough in government today. Gone is the era of endless resources and promises paid by the next generation. Today, we must and we will be more efficient with your tax dollars, more effective in governing our county, and more attentive to the needs of our constituents. The choices we make may not always be popular, but they will be fair and they will be thoughtful. They will be made by taking into account many different perspectives and after necessary information has been gathered. We will take on the status quo and the "it can't be done" mentality and when someone tells us it has to be done a certain way because that's the way it's always been, rest assured we will challenge that mindset. Change is hard, even when necessary and positive, but there is often a fear of what comes next and an anxiety about its effect on people and institutions. We ought not fear that progress. We ought to embrace it as it is the key to our revival. Today begins the hard work. With our eyes looking forward and our minds open anew, we will stand on the foundation laid before us and rely upon it as a source of strength, but not a determining direction. History will be a lesson and virtue will be our guide. Together, today, we set out on this mission with great appreciation, confidence, and optimism. Thank you and may God bless the people of Montgomery County. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioners Castor, Richards, and Shapiro. Ladies and gentlemen, I think our county government is in good hands. Now I would like to introduce Rabbi Saul Greif of Beth Tikva Benay Jesherun for our benediction. Rabbi Greif.
Good morning, everyone. On behalf of Beth Tikva Benay Jesherun and all of us, we want to say to our county commissioners, we want to say to Josh and Leslie and Bruce and all of our elected officials and row officers, we wish you mazel tov, congratulations, bar ha'atzchlagah, great success for you, for us all. Our God and God of our ancestors, the Book of Deuteronomy Councils, magistrates, judges, and officers you shall appoint in all your settlements and they shall govern the people with justice. Therefore, on this third day of January 2012, we, the citizens of Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, ask your blessings for our newly appointed commissioners, Josh Shapiro, Leslie Richards, and Bruce Castor, and row officers, that they will lead and serve us with justice, righteousness, fairness, and compassion throughout the course of their elected term. Quality leadership is not automatic. It requires wisdom, vision, courage, diligence, and devotion. A poor leader fails not only him or herself, but others as well. A good leader, however, can prove immeasurably instrumental... A good leader, however, can prove immeasurably instrumental in improving the lives of his or her constituents, as well as elevating the quality of life for countless others behind his or her immediate sphere of influence. For capable leadership can generate great goodness in a ripple effect that extends far beyond regional borders for the common good of all. So inspire our officials to realize that individually, each and every one of them is capable of affecting tremendously significant contributions to our lives. Help them to realize collectively that through harmonious effort, there is no limit to the accomplishments that are within our reach. Guide them to realize their full potential and allow them to discover how capable they can be and responsible they are to produce positive differences in this jurisdiction. We pray that our cadre of new leaders will prove successful in leading us and motivating us jointly to improve the lives of the citizens of our county in the relentless pursuit of a more productive, welcoming, educated, tolerant, secure, and peaceful society for all. The Book of Deuteronomy implores, "Justice, justice you shall pursue, that you may thrive on this land." Therefore, under the leadership of our new commissioners and officers, may Montgomery County prosper and continue to be recognized as a home characterized by happiness and prosperity, peace and security, justice and freedom, for one and for all, now and for years and years to come. Amen.
The Honor Guard will now retire the colors. Ladies and gentlemen, democracy once again has triumphed. History has been made, and now the governing begins. I want to thank everyone who worked so hard behind the scenes preparing for today's event, and I want to thank everyone for being here today. Drive safely, and on behalf of the college and everyone on this stage, have a happy, fruitful, and happy 2012.